That guy will forget more than I'll ever learn about Public Works and about this great city. And I'm working, trying to study under his wonderful tutel exam as my colleague. Okay, now we've called the special meeting together. What's the item there, Mr. Adam?
The special item today is motion, Cardenas Wezar, relative to asserting jurisdiction over the January 7, 2008 action by the Board of Public Works approving the detailed list of awarded projects for cycle 11 of the Community Beautification Grant pursuant to Charter Section 245 and related matters. There is a time limit on this of February 5, 2008, for council action, or the last day for council action in February 5, 2008.
Okay, we have our esteemed colleague here. Would you please come up, Mr. Cardenas, and tell us about your motion and where we are?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Chairman, Councilmember Smith, for you coming together just to hear this one item. It is rare that we do have meetings just on one item, but also, I think you're doing it out of respect to the department and the process that is underway. And you heard me, Chairman, loud and clear. My intent here was not to delay or cause heartburn, undue heartburn on any organization or the department itself when they're putting out these grants. I'd like to start off by saying, I think it's great that the City of Los Angeles has such a process, where we can take public funds, partner with the communities throughout the city, and work with them to help them with the financial responsibilities of beautifying their community. One of the things that, one of the reasons why I put the motion forward is my chief of staff did meet with a person from the Office of Community Beautification, and did talk with him over a year ago, around this time, and then spoke with him again. And what caused me to want to put a motion in is to let the department know that when they answer questions, we don't expect them to give us an answer right there and then. If they don't have the right answer, go back and get it, and then give us a good answer, the right answer, so we can all be on the same page. Some of the questions that were asked a year ago were inconsistent with some of the answers given to similar questions this year. I want to make sure that people understand, I am not here to try to get people to think that I want more money to come to my district. That would be petty, and that's not why I'm here. I believe that this is a great program. I think this is a program that should succeed and continue, and hopefully grow, yet at the same time, it should serve all of Los Angeles. Yet, what I do want to make sure that the department understands is, they should be reviewing always. They should always be reviewing the process that they've been engaging in. When people don't, when people apply and they don't get accepted, there should be a process in which they educate them as to how they could do better next time. Do they have an adequate process on that or not? I don't know. What I would hope from you, Mr. Chairman, is that you get some report backs, and there's only a small list that I have, you may have more, some report backs from the department about how they're doing on those fronts, including that point. It's wonderful to go ahead and congratulate those organizations that have written grants well enough to get funded, and projects that are good enough to get funded and do good works in the communities. At the same time, what happens if someone actually applied five years ago, three years in a row, and didn't get it? What do you think they're going to do? Sooner or later, they're going to say, hey, this is not my cup of tea, I'm not going to apply for these anymore. Maybe it doesn't mean that they don't have good projects, it just means that maybe they're not communicating well. Maybe they don't have those communication skills. Another thing that is a real big issue in my community, especially where I grew up in Pacoima, is the fact of the matter is, you have a lot of not-for-profits that do wonderful things in the community. It's just that the executive, for example, because of lack of funds, is wearing 10 hats. They're the executive, they're the actual manager, they're the ones that go out there and actually dig the holes sometimes, they're the ones that actually have to write the grants, et cetera. They don't have the ability to compete sometimes with other organizations that might be fortunate enough to be more competitive. And also organizations, there are not-for-profits that actually have grant writers, either in-house, or they have grant writers, or the ability to have grant writers who actually do it pro bono, just because of the circles in which they run in. So to me, I just wanted to make sure that we have a fair process, and I'm not casting any aspersions on the program itself, but what I do want to make sure that is unfortunate, well, it's unfortunate that my chief of staff couldn't be here, because he would give you some specifics, because he is the one who communicated with that person last year, this year, et cetera, and he was a little hot under the collar because he was a little bothered that there was some inconsistencies. And immediately, the answer came back to him when the selection process was over, hey, but you got like six projects or something. That's not the point. It's not the point at all. As a matter of fact, I'm here not so much to focus on the projects that got funded, I'm here to try to get everybody to remember, how do we make sure that it's as inclusive as possible? How do we make sure that the people who are applying come back to the table when they maybe have given up? What are we doing to communicate with them? Can we ever have a perfect process? No. Will some people get discouraged and never want to come back to the table no matter what we offer them? That's fine. That's up to them. But at the same time, what are we doing to review the process? For example, I think there's a great report back question, and that is, what was the original goal and intent in writing when we started this process? When was it started? Whose idea was it? What did they come up with? How did they do that? Was it a dynamic growing process, or is this something where it was actually dynamic and growing for the first few years, and all of a sudden, it just kind of etched in stone, and everybody's just going through the motions and funding, again, good projects, but funding them without looking at the dynamics of what we could do better? Okay? That's one thing I'd like the chairman to ask for a report back on. In addition to that, thank you. And secondly, also, educate us, the council, on how this program has grown dynamically. What is it about the program that started a certain way, and it's different now? And in addition to that, let's use this year's funded projects as an example of which ones actually met the dynamics of the kinds of projects they wanted to fund concurrent with the purpose of the program. You get what I'm saying? Because there's a big difference between there being a great project, but at the same time, what does it have to do with that program? For example, one of the projects that was funded, it looked like the actual application was actually written for Prop O. And it was a very small funding. And the thing that jumped out at me was, if this is exactly right under what Prop O is for, these are much more limited funds than Prop O. Why doesn't that project either piggyback with another Prop O project, or just get funded straight out of Prop O? Because I tell you, it was perfect for Prop O. Again, great project. With these limited funds in the, you know, tens and tens of thousands, where Prop O is at $500,000 and has a specific purpose, and when you take something that specifically fits right into their purpose, why didn't it get funded there? Maybe there's a great answer, and maybe that answer is, well, they did apply to Prop O, and they didn't make it, so they came over here. That being the case, again, is that consistent with the purpose of the program? Should they have told them, you know what? Is there an urgency here? If there's not an urgency, go back to Prop O, we'll even write a letter of support saying we love it ourselves, right? Things of that nature. So again, I apologize that I don't have more specific examples or questions, but my chief of staff was running point on this, and as we spoke earlier, Mr. Chair, he's out of town for personal family reasons, and we pray for him and his family that everything's okay, so far so good, but the bottom line is, he couldn't be here today. And that is the main issue at hand. And to close, I would like to say that my office did get calls and emails. It's wonderful to see the community so engaged. Most of those calls and emails were people upset, why are you delaying the process or what have you? With all due respect, this is not a delay of the process. The fact that we 245'd an item that was voted on by a commission is in fact our authority and responsibility. So also, the department needs to look into the timing of how they roll things out to make sure that they don't make it look like there's some kind of intervention of a process if in fact, the legislative body of the City of Los Angeles actually is exercising their responsibility to take a look at it as well, before it is finalized and before money goes out.
Totally agree. Why don't you stay with us, Tony?
Sure.
While we bring up the department on it. And as for us moving quickly, that's why when you put the 245 in, we scheduled the special meeting for today, first day back at Martin Luther King Weekend, so there would be no delay in anything. But I agree with you that maybe we should get a lot more notice, timeframeing on that. If I could ask you to answer his questions that he threw out, especially the criteria is, the new day, how we notify people, what do we do? And also, how many projects have we approved, and how is the breakdown in the council districts?
Sure. Cynthia Reese, President of the Board of Public Works, and I have Paul Roach, the Director of the Office of Community Beautification. And actually, this is a program that Public Works is very proud of. We've had the program for the last 10 years. It was originally started by Commissioner Valerie Shaw, and the purpose was that we wanted to partner with the community. And we give very small grants, they're up to $10,000, and we require the community group, whoever that might be, to match the dollars with volunteer hours. So it's an investment, basically, we're funding small grants where the community does all the work. And so it's a great partnership, and we, last year, just celebrated our 800th completed project. So it's a very, very popular program that we have, with very little money, we're able to really stretch our dollars and partner with the community. Now, what's happening with this program is getting very, very popular. In this past funding cycle, we had 215 requests, and we were only able to fund 88 programs. Now, I wish I had enough budget to fund all of them, because there's really a lot of great requests. And it's not something that requires a professional grant writer, we purposely don't do that. We want it to be very community-based, so it really comes from the community. So we're at the point now where we have a lot more applications than we actually have money, and I'm going to turn it over to Paul, and he's going to explain exactly, step by step, the process, because the process hasn't changed in the last 10 years, because it's very grassroots oriented, and we haven't heavily had any complaints. Now, maybe one area that we can improve, if somebody doesn't get the grant, maybe work with them a little bit more, but we have a very small staff in the Office of Community Beautification. We only have 13 allocated slots, three vacancies, so we have 10 people working on not only this, but graffiti removal and all the community beautification projects. So it's a very small staff that works on this, and we're here to, you know, obviously, we work very closely with the council, and we're here to work with you any way we can to really showcase this, and I'm going to turn it over to Paul to talk about, step by step, the process, because it's a year-long process.
Good afternoon. Paul Roach, Director of the Office of Community Beautification. As was mentioned, first off, we have two dedicated staff people that work on the grant section. So they do everything from the orientations to the workshops to putting together the The program, one of the main goals of the program is really that the applications are scored and reviewed by members of the community. And each part of the city, West LA, South LA, Central, kind of broken by the planning regions, we have approximately 10 community members that serve as review panelists. And each of those volunteers review about eight to 10 projects. Each project is reviewed by two different scores, nobody knows who has the other project or anything like that.
How does one become part of that panel?
There's various ways. We utilize past recipients of the grants, we utilize known community leaders, sometimes like a principal of an elementary school, members of neighborhood councils. We've also seek or sought output from the different council offices to submit people that they know would be a good fit for review panelist. Every year, we get a few more that come on as a few more go off. You know, people do it for a couple of years in a row, and then it kind of gets, you know, a little too time-consuming, or they just feel like they've put in their time. So people do kind of rotate around. Sometimes, you know, if we get a review panelist that we don't think was up to snuff for whatever reason, you know, we won't ask them back the next year, and we'll try to bring in some fresh blood every year. There is a series of 10 sort of review criteria, which are in each of the applications, so all the groups know upfront exactly what it is that they are going to be scored on. We meet with all the review panelists prior, give them the same materials, the same review criteria, so that they know exactly what it is that they're scoring.
And Paul, how many community workshops do we have throughout the year to inform the community about this grant program?
Yeah, we begin our outreach usually in July, August, September, so about a two-and-a-half month period. We'll typically do 15 to 20 outreach sort of workshops throughout the city, letting people know about the grant, letting people know what it is that we're looking for as they fill out the applications.
When you do the outreach, tell us more about the outreach. We're the Irish neighborhood.
We do neighborhood councils, schools.
What's the group?
Any group we can get. First off, we put information on all the workshops in all the public libraries throughout the city. We outreach to elementary schools. We let each council office know and bring outreach materials to each of your field offices, so that you can distribute them to groups that you know of. We work with Department and Neighborhood Empowerment to bring that information to all of the neighborhood councils. And then we have obviously a mailing list of people that have expressed interest over the past several years in the grant project, so we do a mailing, you know, of all those people that we are aware of as well. Real quickly, we do follow up with all of the grant projects that are not funded. They do get a letter, letting them know who to contact, if they have any questions on the, why their project wasn't funded, what they could do to make it a stronger project for the following year. Our application process is basically the same from year to year, but every year, we do look at it, and we do make small changes of different things that we think will benefit it, make it easier, make it more.
Is there a particular criteria sheet that somebody can look at and see how they can...
Absolutely, yes we do. It's all in the guideline application here, we do. We're certainly more than willing to sit down with any council office, and we've done it with several of them over the past several years, to talk about the process, make the council offices more aware, because we really do depend on your field staff to get a lot of the information out to the groups that you know of, and some of the projects that you think would be, have a benefit of this type of program.
Just a couple questions. When you say you meet with people or you let them know why they didn't get the grant, do you specify the financials were weak, or what was wrong with the application?
Yeah.
Sit down and counsel them?
We will specifically go over with them the review packets, you know, their scores and the comments that the reviewers made.
If they asked for that.
Right, right. If they asked for it. Some of them, you know, just...
And how many do?
I don't know exactly, but Michael, Mike Espinoza's the grant manager. How many people do you think...
We had 250 this year, we funded 88.
15, 215.
215, we funded 88.
Just so far...
Have a seat and introduce yourself.
So you had almost 130 that didn't get it. How many of them came in and said, can you tell us what we did wrong?
Okay, my name is Michael Espinoza, and I'm the grant manager of the Office of Community Beautification. And yes, I would say, we talked to at least 30% of all the people. And what I do is, they talk to me personally, because I don't want them talking to anybody else, and I want to make sure that I give them the skills and the reasons, very specific reasons, on how to make the grant more competitive for the following year. Because what ultimately I'd like to do is make our community as strong grant writers, because once they could find the money within their communities, you know, our grant is a grant with training wheels, and we want them to go to Proposition O and all the other funding sources.
This is really, look, this is a relatively simple...
As simple as we can possibly make it, and yet still have certain city criteria in there.
But you do sit down with all those that want to sit down and tell them, here's what you need to do to make this stronger. Because I've had them rejected, and they came back the next year and got them.
Right.
And we sat down and said, here's what's missing, and so...
And the problem is, over time, as more and more people become familiar with the grant, unfortunately, there are more and more people that are not receiving the grants, just because it's much more competitive.
I had one this year that was turned down last year, it was probably the strongest I'd ever seen in my life. It was turned down last year, because they just didn't write it right. And so we sat down and said, here's what you got to do, and they got the grant this year. So it shows that if you work with people, they can get over those hurdles usually. But the fact that 30% are doing that, it's a good indication that it's known that you can do that, at least, if they take advantage of it.
And it does take a lot of my time, because ultimately, if they call, I have to, it's put a lot of time into really thinking about what they need to do in the following years. And actually, that phone call actually takes usually about a half an hour, because it's hard to get them off the phone, because they're not in a good mood.
Well, they pay your salary, so I'm sure they'd appreciate that. And then the other question is, in the pre-conferences that you do, the...
Workshops.
Workshops. How many participate? Out of the 215 that submitted, how many were actually in the conferences upfront?
I believe we had over 300 people that attended this year. Usually, pretty much, every, yeah, everyone that submits an application usually attends a workshop. We have a mandatory orientation session for all the groups, once they find out that they've been funded, which they need to go to, just to make sure they're all on board of the exact steps that they need to do to begin their process, if they have any permit issues they might need to go through with the city, or if they're good to get started, and how they go about drawing down the funds and that sort of stuff.
And last question, you heard Councilmember Cardenas' concerns, is there any ideas you have that can make the system better to meet those concerns?
You know, again, we're always, every year, look at our application process, if there's anything that we can do to strengthen it, do things that might make it easier or clear for the community groups. We're more than happy to sit down with any council office and hear their concerns. Sometimes, I know that we've set up special orientation sessions, you know, specifically for a council office, where they might want to bring in groups that might have various barriers or something like that in filling out an application. Perhaps, you know, they need a Spanish language orientation or something like that. We obviously and definitely have that capability of inviting them.
And Councilmember, what we may add is, what we have not done in the past is a workshop on the people that did not receive it. So maybe we can add a workshop saying that this is ways where you can improve your chances next time, because we really do want to fund these programs and work with the people, so we'd be more than happy to add something like a follow-up, all the people that got it, and then an extra workshop for how you can improve for next time.
And do we make sure or ensure that some people don't get repetitive grants? They're always the winners, because they know how to write this stuff, and there's always those that lose because they don't know how to write it. Do we make sure that somebody doesn't get it year after year after year?
Spread it around.
Spread it around more?
The main thing we do is, anybody that has an open grant cannot apply for another grant. But if somebody's received a grant previously, as long as that grant's been completed, they are eligible to...
For a new project?
To fund for a new project.
A new project, but not the same project.
Sometimes, it could be a continuation of maybe like a phase two of something like that. Maybe for the first project, maybe they put landscape, landscaping or something like that. And then the next year, they want to come in and put in a community identification sign on the same median island or something like that. But it needs to be somewhat separate and stand alone as far as a project.
Please, Tony.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, that's a great question. And personally, I'm not in favor of rigid black and white, you know, things. For example, we have the California Foundation, which started off with about $4 billion, and they have a standard norm that they haven't been able to break, that they only give grants three years tops, that's it. I don't care how good you are, I don't care what you're doing, I don't care if you're saving the world, or, you know, going to find a cure for cancer, and you're one year away. Bottom line is, that's it, three. Three years, that's it. They don't do that. I think that kind of rigidness isn't good for anything. But at the same time, those are the kinds of things I'd like to see if they could report back to the committee and say, what mechanisms have they grown toward, either formal or informal, are they custom and practice, or they part of your own internal binder of what, you know, how you're going to handle it? And is there a sit-out period? For example, when you do have an organization that does great work, they do a lot of, say their, in their name of their organization is beautification, so they're right up the alley, you know, they're doing, like you said, welcome signs to communities, and they're doing, you know, getting rid of graffiti, or training children on how to clean up their neighborhood, all these wonderful things. Does it make sense or not? I'm not making a recommendation, but express to us, the council, does it make sense or not for there to be or not to be a sit-out period for these wonderful organizations? They're so darn good that they're, say, last year you funded 70, this year it's 88. They were one of 70, they're one of 88. And the year before, they were one of 69, and then one of 60. They're always getting the grant. That means that they're filling a spot, that maybe some other organization could grow to appreciate being in that spot. But the bottom line is, they're just, again, not competitive enough, because maybe there's six or 10 of those organizations that are doing great work, that have just mastered this, again, great work, but they're filling these limited spots.
And if I might, Councilmember, maybe what we should also do is notify you not only of the groups that are awarded in your district, but maybe also notify you of the ones that are not awarded, so maybe you can work with them and see if there's other sources of funding that we can really do. Because the community really puts their heart and soul into these projects, and I really wish I had enough money to fund them all, so we should notify you of the ones that didn't get it, so you could...
You guys, we do. I believe on the master sheet that you guys get, you get a list of your funded projects, and then the projects that were not funded.
But I think what the president was just talking about, which is a great idea, and that is maybe encouraging other entities like council offices, since we are sectored out and we are representing 15 different parts of the city, where maybe we could decide if we want to engage with you in like a round two, if you want to call it that, where for example, say in this case, six, an average of six per district, but the average district seemed to, six were funded, and the average district sounded like about 14, 15 on average. So maybe it could be afforded to a council office and/or neighborhood councils, et cetera, for them, round one, round two, round three. It's really not your money on the second or third round, but there's some great, great applications, but you just didn't have enough money. So therefore, what happens is, at the end of the process, maybe using this year's figures, 215 applications, 88 funded directly in what I'm describing as round one, and all of a sudden, you find that round two, maybe another 14 or 15 were funded, and then round three, another six or seven were funded. Then we have over 100 projects. Again, wonderful projects, organizations and communities that deserve to have this beautification, and then we enhance it even further.
Let me read some questions into the record, and on this form, which is helpful, you should put another line of how much money it is per council district.
Okay.
You know, because some grants are 10K, some are less or whatever, just to get a sense of the financial breakdown. Let me just read them for the record, some of you've already answered. When was this grant program established?
10 years ago.
What are the criteria for awarding the grants? That has to be clear, okay? Make sure that we get a simple sheet on it, not just a form document like this. Something simple, that anybody can look at, that gets out to the neighborhood councils, gets out to all the community groups. This is the 10 criteria, eight or something, you know? This is a backup to fill out forms and stuff. Third, do you have a breakdown of the grant recipients by council district? The answer is yes, and we'll add another column, which is the dollar amount per council district. Four, does each council district receive the same amount of grants each cycle? Well, we just saw where two of the 15 got five grants, and the rest all got six grants. So...
It was a very even year this year.
It seemed pretty clear.
Not every year is quite that even, but...
And it certainly isn't pork politics by electeds, when you see that it's pretty much the same across the board. Nobody did a strong arm and got eight or 10. Okay. And somebody else got three, two or three. Okay. How many grants are awarded in each cycle? That's the...
Well, it varies, because last year, we actually worked really hard and awarded 100, because it was Public Works 100-year anniversary.
Right, right, right.
So for that, to celebrate that, we did 100, but this year, we didn't have the funds to do it.
Okay. Must an applicant contain matching grant in order to be awarded these grants?
It's matched with time or money, so it could be volunteer hours.
What kind of outreach is done by the board to ensure that all council districts have grant applications? You've answered that, you're all over the place, right?
As much as we can be, absolutely.
Okay. And it's also online, if somebody punches into the system? Does the board ever seek input or advice from council districts about what groups and applicants?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And that particular...
But I personally don't get involved in actually the selection, nor do any of the commissioners, so we seek input in terms of people submitting applications, but we don't have any direct influence over who gets them. All that's left up to the grassroots process.
Fair enough. And I know, as Mr. Cardenas was saying about his chief of staff, who's here, his father's illness is dealing with, or his mother is right now, the particulars of a given grant person that didn't get it or shouldn't get it or whatever, has to be totally clear, not only to the chief of staff, but to the council member. So that doesn't happen again in the context of one particular group or not group or something like that.
And to be honest with you, I was not aware of any conversations that had taken place until the motion came out. So, but we're, you know, we're more than happy to work with all council offices.
Very cool. Now, Mr. Cardenas, your report backs, are we clear on what they are, committee? committee? No? Would you restate them at this point?
One of them, Mr. Chair, is that they report to the council about not only the dates of, it was 10 years ago, what have you, how it's grown to where it is today, were there any philosophical changes along the way from 10 years ago when it started, and how does that fit into the grant process? For example, of the 2000, is it considered the 2007 process that just finished?
Yeah.
They were awarded no eight, but the process is no seven. Okay. The process that just got awarded, the 88 projects, that they can use that as an example of how that is the consistency with how it started, how it developed, and what they're trying to find philosophically, why the program even exists. So that being a report back. Secondly, if they could go ahead and show the council a timeline, that if, for some reason or what have you, the official process hasn't completed, such as the council having the opportunity to look it over itself before it's done and awarded, that that be respected as well in the process. And I'm looking at my notes. Okay. One of them, I put like three of them all together, as in the goals, how it started, how it developed, and then how it's working today.
Mr. Smith, can I make that motion?
So moved.
So moved. We will do that.
Oh, one more thing that I think they agreed to, but I guess you could make it a report back, on, I guess, reporting on how and formalizing the communication with the grants that didn't get funded. They did answer it verbally, but might as well put it in the report back as well.
So moved. Great, great, great. Now, the motion itself, which basically said, bring it to the committee, all of these folks here who want to speak, just want to let you know that after Mr. Smith and I vote, which will be after you speak, they'll go right back to the council for immediate action to be funded.
And it could be as early as Friday?
It could be as early as...
I don't know. None of this, uh...
I was not instructed to obtain a placeholder, therefore, I won't be able to put it on for Friday.
We'll make...
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So we'll be pushed through the process next Tuesday, assuming we both agree on wanting to do that, which we'll have that conversation in a second. So I say to both, you know, to Robin, and to Tracy, and to Maxine, and Nadine, and Pauline, do you all want to still speak?
No.
No, that's fine.
Is that fine?
I'll spend for one second.
All right, then we'll just let you come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I want to thank you, Mr. Cardenas, because this was a learning experience for me, and thank you for doing that. I learned a lot more about the grants in my district, and how they are decided, and what the situation was. So it was a good public service to all of us. Thank you. Please, come on up.
Hi, I'm Robin Mures. I'll just mention that I was one of those people who applied for a grant last year and was denied the grant last year. But this year, I called, and I want to make sure you know that you have really excellent staff, and this program is really well-run. And I spoke with Michael Espinoza, and probably took up that full half hour, and he gave me very specific input, which then enabled me to get funded this year. Now, that is excellent. It's really well-run. The other thing I want to tell you, though, is it needs way more funds. And I went to a meeting regarding Quimby Funds, and they're putting up lampposts for $100,000, one lamppost for $100,000. What this group would do with $100,000 is way beyond what one lamppost at Stoner Park will do.
But that's a really cool lamppost.
No. No. This is grossly underfunded, it's extremely well-administered, and it shouldn't have delays like this, because we work extraordinarily hard to put together these grant applications. They're actually bears. I do public art professionally. I've been awarded hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants in other cities. This was one of the hardest grants I've ever done, not because of what you have to write, because that's all pretty well-described and brief. But the documentation is just amazingly difficult, and there are problems in my neighborhood of Venice, like that everybody's applying for one of these. So when they say that you're supposed to get letters of support from community groups, nobody else will give a letter of support, because they're all submitting their proposals.
Right, we know.
That was one of the major reasons I was declined last year. So...
Robin, in our district, the 11th, we had 17 applications, and we awarded six grants.
And we probably needed all 17 to be funded, because Venice is a mess. But thank you.
Thank you very much. And not that I can talk politics here, but we have Measure S on the ballot on two weeks from today, which is a significant issue of our general overall budget. And we're in a situation now where we're already in a deficit, and Mr. Smith and I are both on the Budget Committee. And we're looking forward to the budget process this year, to see how we're going to move forward in just basic services for the city, as we also hear the state doing its thing. So these are tough times and budget situations. Totally agree with you. The community support and outreach and everything is fantastic. And I know personally some of these groups, how hard they've worked to get that funding, and I agree with what you said. Does anybody else want to speak? And then come on up and introduce yourself, Nadine.
I'm Maxine Laurel from the Venice Canal Foundation. I would like to know what steps we should do from today. How do we approach a no vote for the motion? Right to each council person?
We mean a no vote.
Well, for the motion, for...
The motion was to come before the committee today, which we've just done. Then we go before the council, and we're going to fund these projects and get beyond.
Okay, so there's no...
No concern.
No concern.
No.
It'll be unanimous.
It'll be unanimous.
I guarantee it.
Okay, that's what we were concerned about.
By the council. I know you were concerned about it. We apologize that you came out at this level, but the issue was significant enough that we did it. But don't worry, it'll be over. My dead body that you don't get.
No. This meeting was an eye-opener.
Yeah, for me, too.
You know, it's wonderful that we are able to come down and sit in...
A pleasure to have you, Maxine. Anybody else? Please. Your name, please?
My name's Pauline Morrow, and...
Pauline Morrow, yes.
I just, I listened to Councilwoman Cardenas' remarks about the motion, and I just want to let you know, you know, I live in Eagle Rock. We were awarded $10,000 grant, even if we hadn't won the grant. I would think it was completely fair and clear. You know, they offered seminars, a PowerPoint presentation, I don't know if you got the PowerPoint presentation, but it basically held your hand on how to like, you get this, you get points for this, you get points for that, you get points for this. And they set expectations. There's like, we award one out of two. And I went back and I set expectations with my folks, my community. And I also want to say, we're a grassroots org. I'm a full-time mom. I have two kids.
Oh, great.
I, you know, we, this is all volunteer work, you know. It's not like, I've never applied for a grant before, except to Target, and they were like opaque. This is the most amazingly transparent, you know, group. And Michael Espinoza gave direct lines, his direct phone line and direct email. And, you know, on the website, you can't get that PowerPoint presentation where I checked it, because I was like, oh my God, it was so clear. But, you know, that's all I want to say. And there is a process, they outlined it. And it makes me a little discouraged to know that there's a process, and that if you follow the process, you can kind of get stalled, because I think there's a better way to go about this. I think it's good to have good governance, and this is important to make sure the process is clear. But maybe you should like, let the cycle go through.
We will.
You know, do you know what I mean?
We will.
You're actually, the better way would have been let the thing go through, and then bring a motion and say, clarify these issues.
Exactly. That's all that process.
Correct. And we appreciate you saying that, and we will be moving forward.
And we ought to put the PowerPoint on the website. Not a bad idea.
Thank you.
All I can think of is, is one of my neighbors who has three young boys, that is all excited about this as well, and I have to live with her, too. So I had nothing to do with the criteria or picking the groups, as did none of my colleagues. It was done by the Citizens Committee as an oversight. All right, so Tracy and Nadine, you okay?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm pretty safe there.
Okay, fine. Mr. Smith, we have a motion, move this back to council.
Move approval of the original grant approvals, and then we have to have a second motion, which is Mr. Cardenas' recommendations.
Recommendations to disapprove.
So on the first motion, I second that. That's approved. Back to council next Tuesday.
Disapprove the motion.
Disapprove the 245, approve the original grant, then instruct the department to report back on the issues Mr. Cardenas raised, and we'll discuss it today.
How many days you want for that? 30, 60?
There is fine, I think it's fine.
30 days, fine. Report back in 30 days to committee.
That'll be it. All right. That's very clear.
Everything clear? Thank you all for coming. Bless you. Have a great day. End of meeting, unless there's any more public comment.